It's starting on YouTube in about 15 seconds.
All right. All right, can you go ahead and pull the agenda back up? All right, entertaining motion, we're gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. Entertaining motion for adoption of the agenda.
So moved?
Moved by Ms. Darby, is there a second? Everyone is on mute.
Second.
A second by Ms. Hederit, all right. All right, entertaining motion to convene into executive session.
So moved?
Second.
All right, if you would just go ahead and click on your breakout. All right, is everyone back in? All right, we will now reconvene into open session.
I have a motion.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Darby.
I move to approve the charter renewal application for Orange Grove School with a strike through of the language after the term 2225 through the end of the sentence on page three of the executive summary, which is the fourth paragraph, fourth line, and to direct legal services to negotiate a 10-year contract and facility use agreement for CCSD facilities that Orange Grove Charter School occupies.
Second.
All right, motion has been moved by Ms. Darby, seconded by Ms. Coates, are there any questions? Hearing none, I will do a voice vote. Ms. Coakley, how do you vote?
I'm sorry, I was muted.
Ms. Coakley, how do you vote?
I was.
I think Dr. French may have a question.
All right, go ahead, Dr. French, you have a question?
Yes, I did, and I was muted, and I didn't realize I was muted. I do have a, I wanted to make a friendly amendment before we voted.
Okay.
I'd like to make a friendly amendment, oh, go ahead.
Just one second.
I don't see where to go.
I think you can go ahead and make your friendly amendment, I think he's.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, where's, where's the board tier?
I don't know, he just disappeared.
There you go, there you go.
All right, go ahead.
Okay, I'd like to make a friendly amendment that the, that the school send out mail notifications to all parents in the zone ahead of the choice application season to inform them that they are eligible to apply for seats, and that we ask them to fulfill the suggestions that they made in their letter about modifying their application process with assistance for parents in the zone.
Can you say that, say that again for me?
That's the longest thing that's created.
Okay.
Are you ever written down?
I don't.
Okay.
Can I take a stab at it?
Yeah, sure.
I think the amendment could be condensed to read, require school to do a direct mail to all attendance zone houses prior to the application process.
And require, require school to do a direct mail.
To all the attendance zone houses.
Or households.
And commit to the alternative application processes they suggested in their renewal application. Does that capture what you're saying, Dr. French?
Yes, I believe so.
So now that becomes a friendly amendment from Cindy.
I would prefer it to be a friendly amendment from Dr. French, I was just helping her words method.
That wasn't what she said, but, okay.
Well, okay.
Does that, Dr. French, does that adequately address your concerns?
I think I would change the phrase at the end from "in the charter renewal application" to "in the letter from the print," is it the principal that sent the letter? The letter, in the letter.
It's in the recruitment plan, it's.
Right. Okay, so instead of charter application as, as outlined in the recruitment plan.
All right, so we can be clear on, because there's a lot of conversation going into the motion. So there, there's been a motion that has been made by Ms. Darby, seconded by Ms. Coates, and then there's, here is a friendly amendment from Dr. French. So, Ms. Darby, I believe you were trying to capture that. And if you have it, can you recite it back to everyone so we can have a clear understanding of what's, what that friendly amendment is?
What I have is that we require the school to do a direct mail to all attendance zone households and commit to the alternative, I think you said, alternative application efforts as outlined in the recruitment plan. I would, I would prefer it say, and commit to the recruitment initiatives, because it isn't alternative, it's, it's what they outlined as recruitment initiatives.
I'm okay with that.
All right, now, I just want to get clarity before we move forward with that as well. I want to make sure that legal and Mr. Olson, that we're in compliance with that motion discussion. I guess that's where, you know, we can make motions all day long, but we want to make sure that this is something that we can truly honestly carry out. So, do you see, I'm just asking, are there any clarifying description that needs to be in that motion or the motion that was made that we're not able to carry out? That's my question.
And also, does that motion need a second before we get into discussion on it?
It, well, that, yeah, thank you, Ms. Green. I wanted to go back procedurally. First, Ms. Darby, do you accept a friendly amendment?
I accept the friendly amendment as I, as Dr. French, I just agreed to, yes.
Okay, can we then publish that motion with the amendment for everybody to see? Because I'm still not understanding some of it.
So I'll read it back one more time. Require, so we're adding at the end of, after occupies, we could start a new sentence or do an and. Require the school to do a direct mail to all attendance zone households and commit to the recruitment initiatives as outlined in the recruitment plan.
Thank you, Ms. Darby. And Reverend Mack, you had a question on the floor, I'm sorry.
Yep, I just want to make sure that the motion and the friendly amendment is in compliance to what we can officially carry out. Were there any questions that staff may have or legal in, in this motion? I mean, if there's none, then there is none. I just wanted to make sure.
I don't have, I don't have any from the legal perspective. Natalie?
I don't have any, thank you.
Okay, all right, all right, hearing that, then we will do a roll call on the vote, on the motion. Ms. Cokely, how do you vote?
Excuse me, Reverend Mack, I need a.
Any questions? I'm sorry, Reverend Mack, if you have any questions on that.
Yeah, I asked already if there were any questions. There, there weren't any.
Okay.
Need a second, please.
Yes, yeah, it was moved by Ms. Darby and seconded by Ms. Coats.
I think she's still writing it out. We don't, still don't have it in front of us.
There we go. All right, Reverend Mack, you're calling for the vote. All right, has everyone read the motion? All right, Ms. Cokely, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Coats?
Yes.
Dr. French?
Aye.
Ms. Heterage?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Darby?
Yes.
And I vote yes, that motion carries unanimously. Move for adjournment?
So move.
This, this meeting is officially adjourned. Everyone have a great evening.
Thank you, Reverend Mack.
Thanks.